Good morning. I'd like to call the ARPA meeting for February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. I want to welcome everybody here today. We'll begin our meeting with the invocation by Commissioner Adamsak and the pledge led by Commissioner Harvey. Please stand if you're able.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us all here together in this place. Please allow us to deliberate in what's best for our community and what's within your will. Please guide us in our patience for one another as we speak through these things. This could be potentially a topic that, you know, creates some deliberation. Please, as we go out in this community, as we leave this place, allow us to be a light to others and to guide people to you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Want me to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Adamsak and Commissioner Harvey.
You're welcome.
Okay, Commissioners, you'll see the agenda. It does have a breakdown of the ARPA funds that we received and then funds that we've have dedicated so far. What I want to do is we'll open up public comment and then I want to go down after that and just go through each Commissioner. We'll be able to talk and present maybe their requests or concerns about how this money is to be spent and then we'll have some discussions after that. So at this time, I'd like to open up the public comment portion. This, the portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It's not reasonable to expect the board will be engaged in debate or deliberation on matters that they had proved no knowledge before. So anyway, if you fill out a comment card, that would be great. You don't have to. You'll limit to, your comments to three minutes. So our first speaker is Cliff Leida. If you'd come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Morning Commissioners, my name is Cliff Leida, one, two, three, South Second Street, Palatka. I am representing the Bread of Life and I'm standing here this morning in front of you just to give you a brief update on our work. It has been our mission to provide nutritious meals on a five-day-a-week basis in a dignified setting at our location at three twenty North Fifth Street in Palatka, which has been located there since May of two thousand and twenty-one. During the recent very difficult cold snap we had here in Putnam County, the Bread of Life partnered with First Presbyterian Church downtown Palatka to open cold weather shelter, which we did for three nights, Friday, Saturday, Sunday of the week, of that weekend. It is something of an expansion of the Bread of Life's activity, although it has always been within our purview that homelessness and hunger are, and food insecurity are issues that are very intimately related. So I simply bring you the update that the Bread of Life expanded its activities this past weekend to include cold weather sheltering. It is the long-term aspiration of Bread of Life and First Presbyterian Church to be actively involved in cold weather shelter on a more extensive basis, but for this crisis time, the Bread of Life did expand its work and we were very gratified by the results. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Cliff, I think Commissioner Rawls has a question.
What was the need that you fulfilled? How many people did you accommodate?
Over the weekend, we had a total of twenty-nine over the weekend, three nights.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other citizens wishing to make public comment at this time? Okay, we'll close the public comment portion and we'll move into our regular agenda. Commissioners, as I mentioned, you'll see in the agenda that the amount that we received in ARPA funding, a little over fourteen million dollars, and that we've dedicated seven thousand, seven billion for the communication system, two hundred and fifty-six for water system upgrade, and then Phase One water system was three and a half million dollars. So like I said, I'd just like to start the conversation. I will, I'll start. We'll just go down per number of districts. So it'll be, I'll start and then Commissioner Adamsak will end.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
In the, I don't know what VSD water system upgrade.
Variable frequency drives for the pumps.
Thank you.
I just have one question as well.
Okay.
Communication system, did we do, I thought we had an assessment that we voted on. Wasn't that separate from that seven million? Or did we push that into it and, or did that get funded from some other fund? I thought that was coming from ARPA for a hundred and nine thousand or something.
There is the consulting fee. At this point, I put it into the seven million. If you'd like to show the hundred thousand an additional, then we can.
Only because we voted on separately, so I think.
Sure. So deduct what you've got there from a hundred and nine. So you've got a hundred and nine thousand less than what you're showing.
Or you got seven point one.
Or you, whatever, however you want to do it. Do your math however you want.
And with regards to that, will that study determine the final cost of the communication system?
That's not necessarily a study. What we did was engage a consultant to assist us with two parts of the project. One, they are gathering the data and analysis on our current system and what we would need to get from where we are to where we need to be. They are taking on the responsibility of writing the technical specifications for the solicitation which will be issued. They are also going to assist with the evaluation of that solicitation when it comes back in to measure the proposals against the solution that we need and guide us through that process. Additionally, they're taking on the permitting requirements in order to get the tower and everything permitted. So ultimately, when we're complete, yes, we will have a number, but it will be by virtue of the tasks of getting the RFP to completion, not necessarily a report that they divvy for us.
So are we putting the cart ahead of the horse by setting aside seven million dollars?
No, sir, I don't believe so.
Where is the seven million coming from? The, where is that number coming from? I guess is my question.
Some rough estimates working with the consultant on what we believe based on the infrastructure we have and the infrastructure we need, just like you would have an engineer's estimate of probable cost. That's exactly what you've got there.
So did the consultant already give us some guidance or some suggestions or some view of what we might be looking at?
Working through that process now to narrow, to get to that end result, so that.
You'd said, you said based on.
Where we are today, correct.
So, is that published?
No.
I guess my concern is we're putting this seven million dollar number out there and it's a target for everybody to shoot for when they're putting up, when they're putting proposals together.
That's part of, yeah.
Will this be sole source, you think?
No. It's going to be a formal RFP.
It just, it feels like we really, I feel like we should have waited for the, for that report to come back, see what our needs really truly are and then determine how we spend the money, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. JR, did you want to make any comments before I go to them? Okay. Commissioner Adamsak?
So is the idea of piggybacking on St. John's County part of their analysis, that being a possibility? Because as recently as two weeks ago, I was talking to some people from the sheriff's office who felt that that's still viable and they feel it would be potentially cheaper to partner that way. They don't know. I mean, they're just doing a swag too, just like the seven million is a swag. Is that something that they're analyzing as part of what, because that was discussed when we decided to spend the hundred and nine thousand, that they're going to look at these different options?
I'll take that one. I think I can answer what you're asking for there. So as part of the RFP write process, we asked the consultant to write in there, is there any solution-based articles that you could see that could potentially save us money? And the vendor could come back and go, you could do this, this, and this, and it'll save you X, Y, Z. So yes, that is part of the RFP that is being written now. They can come back with a solution. Another company may come back with another solution that says you don't need a tower because of X, Y, Z. I mean, so there is an area in RFP for them to actually give us a solution. And one of the solutions may be to tie into St. John's and somebody may come in and bid to do the whole project on our own.
And then there's, there's been conversation about the state system as well. And that that could potentially save us a lot. And I believe it would save us a lot because I looked at some of the documentation that Mr. Hayes, regardless of who brings it to us, that Mr. Hayes brought to us. And that seems like it could be viable as well. So is that part of what they're looking at?
Absolutely. That they could come in there with, it's referred to as SLRs. They have the opportunity for SLRs to come in and that same RFP and offer us that, that platform. Absolutely.
Because my understanding currently, if Florida Highway Patrol or anything else is in Putnam County, that is what they're using and it is viable for them, so why wouldn't it be viable for us? And I've had this conversation with Florida Highway Patrol representatives.
Okay. Well, what they're telling us is it does not work well offside the major thoroughfares, Highway seventeen, twenty.
But it's viable in most of the county.
Well, off of three oh eight in Crescent City, it's not going to work well in Hewitt Lake because the infrastructure is not there. They have two towers in Putnam County, if I'm not mistaken. One of them is East Plaquehead FHP Station and one of their SLR sites is in Crescent City on three oh eight. And I believe they just did build one in the floor home area that SLRs is tied to. So we managed, I mean, that's absolutely an option that can come back to us is to tie into SLRs.
So are we going and pursuing that though separately to see if we can partner with the state to say, hey, why don't we piggyback our monies together to get this coverage? Because they're saying they have ninety-nine percent coverage statewide and so.
I, I, I don't know. I mean, with those ninety-nine percent numbers, I'd have to disagree with that.
I disagree with it in Putnam County, but that's, that's what they publish.
But I mean, they can come back. I mean, that could be the option. Somebody brings us. They have to respond to the same RFP because if we single source or sole source, we're not going to know what anybody else's price was. And moving forward, the state is like a cell phone. It's going to have a non-recurring cost for every single unit that we have. If there's a thousand radios across the system and it costs us twenty dollars a month per unit, that's twenty thousand dollars a month here through fruition and we still have to buy the hard equipment. So. But it's actually going to be an option.
Infrastructure money that the state has that we have, that maybe it can be a partnership that's all separate from this.
Right. I mean, I don't know what the long-term goal is.
Follow multiple paths at the same time.
But they, but they all have the option to, to link into that RFP request. And if SLRs comes out the winner, then SLRs comes out the winner.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I appreciate the fact that we want to make sure that we're doing things correctly as we move forward, but I was hoping that instead of looking back at what we've already obligated out of this, that we could look forward to what we've still got to obligate out of it. I agree with all the comments today for sure, that we need to make sure that we, and I understood that it definitely was the St. John's system. I didn't know about this one here. But we would look at all these options for the best way for us to proceed, get the coverage we need for the cheapest dollar. So I think that's, those are all good comments. But I was hoping that we could kind of take the limited time that we have here this morning or whatever time we have today and use it towards trying to determine what we're going to do with the other three million sixty, six hundred and nine thousand dollars, if you take the hundred and nine out of it. So thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, just really quickly, I wanted to piggyback on what Commissioner Turner said. I think we have put this to bed to a certain extent. And plus, we've also asked our staff to look at how we can communicate. I remember that very clearly in the meeting with surrounding counties. So I'm looking forward. I've heard all the other things and all the other solutions, possible solutions. I've also heard their, some of their limitations. I don't want to put that out there right now. I don't think it's necessary for us to do that. Commissioner Rawls, I do agree with you that sometimes we put a price tag on projects and you know what? That's what the price tag is going to come back at, but if it's a legitimate bid, which it will be, it's open to that and we just have to have a place number, placeholder number there. So I'm ready to move forward, Mr. Chairman, and I thank you for your time.
Commissioner Rawls?
I just want to make sure, it's a little vagueness of some of the answers I'm hearing this morning. I just want to make sure that the consultant will be directed to look at the SLR system and at the St. John's County viability as well when they give us their, their report. Just, I'm just not looking for any, any response. Just want to say to me that that is actually part of what we're doing. So we don't have to discuss it. I just wanted, you know, you said, you said if they, if they want. I'm saying I think we need to direct them to. So thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments from the staff before we move forward? Julian?
So Commissioners, just to make sure that we're completely upfront. When we put out an RFP, the entire process behind that is not to go pick Company A and gear it towards it. So when we put out an RFP, the, what the salute, the, what is being brought to the table is we need a solution that does X, Y, Z. We will ensure each of those entities are invited to participate, but I can't legally chase any of them down and gear it towards them.
I'm talking about the, the report or the consultant or the study, whatever you call it. I just want to make sure that in that study, they include by looking at whether or not SLRs is viable or teaming up at the same time. That's all I'm asking. Just make sure that's in there. Thank you.
Okay. You, okay. Commissioner Adamsak?
So SLRs in St. John's County are not going to bid on the RFP. So it would be, we'd have to let the contractors know that are these viable opportunities to fill our need. So it's not like, they're not standalone companies. So it would be a partnership in some way with the state in one instance and with another county in the other instance. So I just want to make sure that, and I think we all thought St. John's County at least was a piggyback possibility when we voted on that.
Yes. So Harris Communications is who the state representative is for the SLR system. So we've already talked to them. We spoke to them early on and some, just getting some budgetary numbers together. They gave us some budgetary numbers on their system. They didn't think at that point that SLRs was viable in Putnam County and that's straight from the installer. And also, we've sat down with Motorola, which is also going to bid in it. They know the solution that could be possibly at hand. They're very well aware of it. So that's why part of that is in that RFP process is to bring us those forward. That's straight from SLRs. SLRs told us that their infrastructure is not here yet. Now, whether it's going to be here in eighteen months, don't know, but that's their option to bring that to us. Harris could bring that to us as one of their proposals, just like Motorola could bring the St. John's. Yeah. So absolutely.
But, but our, but our consultant is going to look into that, what they recommend to go the best route for the best bang for the money.
Absolutely.
That's why we hired them.
That's correct.
And the consultant will include St. John's and SLRs in their deliberations?
Absolutely. We're going to have a conversation with them. Absolutely.
No, I'm not saying have a, I'm saying at, at the end of the day, will they say, we're looking at a traditional VHF, UHF, SLRs system in St. John's County system or we're only going to focus over here? But if, you know, we'll discuss this if you want. I'm saying I would like to see us weigh everything and then have, have that feedback for them before we start going down the path of our final decisions. That's all I'm saying.
The consultant is very aware, very well aware of both.
I'm just looking for a simple yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, JR. Okay. Any other comments before we move forward? Okay, I'll go ahead and start. I, you know, to, to make the decisions to how to spend this money, it's weighed on each Commissioner, I'm sure. It definitely has me. We try to, you know, do the best for the citizens of Putnam County. There's been a lot of requests from the nonprofits and they are all well-deserving. I'm not in favor of giving money to the nonprofits right now with this money. So we, we have a little over, I guess we're down to what, three million, six hundred thousand? I guess my numbers will change a little bit. I, I believe that emergency services definitely needs to be taken care of. We have gotten behind with replacing equipment, ambulances and squads. So we've had some numbers given to us from Julianne early on in this that this does qualify for ARPA money. So I'd like to make the recommendation or at least have the conversation when we're, we're done with Commissioners' request for four ambulances, to go ahead and buy those. It'd be one point two million dollars and then quick response vehicles would be three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And also two parks in Putnam County qualify for ARPA money. One of them is the Theobald Sports Complex. We had some numbers run of upgrades in lighting, parking, drainage, concession stand, scoreboards of one million, sixty thousand dollars. And then also, South Putnam Complex is in need of upgrades also. Three hundred thousand dollars for LED lighting, new driveways, scoreboards and remodeling of restrooms and concession stand there also, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So this comes to a total, it leaves, it did leave six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. I was going to put some in a contingency, but what I wanted to do, there was about five hundred thousand left. And I was going to just throw this out and maybe make the recommendation that each district, each Commissioner would receive one hundred thousand dollars for a project that they wanted to do in their district or however they felt that they wanted to spend the money as long as it met the ARPA guidelines. So that's my request there is that we consider parks and recs of one million. I didn't total this up. I thought it was totaled on here. A little over. Yes, one point five two. And then the, also the response vehicles and emergency vehicles at one point five, a little over one point five million dollars also. Okay. That's, that's my request. That's, that's my proposal there. And then also to divvy up the last five hundred thousand dollars to the Commissioner at roughly one hundred thousand dollars per, per district. Mr. Chairman? Okay. Any questions?
I do. Are we going to, are you going to, is the format that we're all going to present and then deliberate at the end or do you?
That's what I would like to do.
Good. Then I'll keep my comments to the end, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
I personally think we should be doing what the state charges us to do, which is support the nonprofits and these community service agencies that actually perform services that we're required to perform under one twenty-five. You just heard Cliff talk about housing twenty-nine people during a cold snap, but I can assure you that if you slept outside last night in the weather without proper clothing or blankets, you would succumb to hypothermia real quick at a forty-five degree, not even fifty degrees. But I, I personally would like to see as much money as possible go to the requests that were made. We've heard from all of them. I think we're being derelict in our responsibilities, not only under the Constitution or the state statute, but to our citizens. You know, COVID did not cause the county to get behind. COVID did not age our fire truck fleet, our ambulances, our communications tower, or anything that has to do with parks and recreation. We did that as a community. We were given twelve million dollars last year and fourteen million dollars this year. And instead of putting the money in the community to help the citizens that are suffering, we're then going to take the money away and spend it on ourselves to further our cause. And we can sit up here and talk and blovey it all we want about how we don't want to fund nonprofits and how that this is taking taxpayers' dollars and giving it to a nonprofit. But at the end of the day, we're taking tax dollars and we're performing these functions anyways, but we're doing it in a way that doesn't help the community move forward by having to incarcerate people or having to utilize services that we're, that we are paying for that are not to the advantage of the taxpayer. So three point seven one eight, eight-three million dollars left over. I think we should have a conversation about how get, how that gets divvied up amongst the nonprofits. But I think that we really owe it to the community to have a mental health receiving facility, to be able to support folks like Epicure, Feed the Need, Lee Conley House. We've already heard from Bread of Life. Yesterday, we heard from the Christian Caring Center and Heart of Putnam. They perform functions that we don't want to do. And I think, I think what they do is vital as well. So that's my ask.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also had some of the same things on my list as you, but I had some additional ones on top of that. The, I like the idea of the, each Commissioner gets a hundred thousand to do a project in their district as long as it works for ARPA funds on top of, on top of the deal. I really like that idea. This is the first I've heard of that here this morning. I, I think that's a great idea. I like the idea for the one point two million in ambulances. I actually had that one on my sheet too. The quick response I had on my sheet. We've got four HVAC replacement units that would work for this that I have on my list that would be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We've been having issues trying to figure out where that money would come from. I think it would fit into the ARPA funding, not a hundred percent certain, but I believe it would. I'd have to get a nod from Sam probably on that one. I understand that the parks, the only ones that can be used for ARPA money are the ones that are in preferred census tracts for the ARPA money. It can't just be used anywhere on any park. It has to be in the track. But I'm not sure, and this is the question I need to ask, if it's under a certain amount, could you, in other words, I'll just say it. This new park we got in East Plaque, they gave us the park with, all we had to do was put up a sign, which is going up for long. The, the, the things that need to go in the park, I mean, it could be used for a trailhead. It could be used for all this stuff because it's right beside the bike path. So there's a lot of reas things we could do with it. If the, let's say for instance, that we went along with Chairman Pickens's deal kind of, and we did the five hundred thousand, a hundred for each Commissioner, could I use my hundred towards that park or was it because it's not in one of the census tracts or not? Or is that a question that's just in too gray still?
I was muted. I'll try to answer that as best I can. I'll probably have to do some digging. They're very strict about the QCT, but it is in a low-income area. So we might be able to find that it's serving underserved residents and be able to find eligibility. But that we'd have to do a little more.
Be a possibility.
It's a possibility. Yes, sir.
My list, I actually had a hundred and fifty in that, but we could probably do the hundred if, if we went along with Commissioner, Chairman Pickens's deal with everybody got a hundred grand. And there's one other item that wasn't included in that that's absolutely essential. We've got three point five million dollars plus two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars already allotted for Phase One of the water where we also got another grant that's going to put sewer in at the same time. Then we got the grant yesterday that's a, a five million dollar grant, but it's a seventy-five percent grant. And it's my understanding at this time that we're just not sure that we could use ARPA money for the, for the one point two five million dollars to match on that thing. We're just not sure yet. And I think you'd have to go all the way back to Treasury to find out if that's acceptable or not. So I guess my point is one of the most important components of this whole plan for sustainability on the utility system where the citizens don't have to continue putting money in that in the future is that we have a grace period and pay for people to sign up, either to the existing system or the new portion of the system. Without it, it's not going to be successful. Because I think the next step past this has got to be, I think Commissioner Rawls actually brought this up a while back in a forum, is that at some point, we've got to pass an ordinance that says if you live in the area of the water system and you're not hooked up to it, you can't drill a well if your well goes bad. You've got to hook on to our water system. So we're not going to make you automatically go hook on tomorrow, but in the future, when your, if your well goes bad, you can't drill a new well. You got to hook on to our water system. That's actually an easier way to get it done that doesn't make everybody hook up at one time. Like if you mandated, I think when Crescent City went on sewer, for instance, they mandated that everybody in there pay the money and hook up. And I know because I had a house down there and had to hook it up. So everybody had to do it within a certain amount of time and there was no assistance on that one. So everybody had to do it within a certain amount of time, and there was no assistance on that one. So, long story short, I think that we've got to set aside some of this money to help pay for hookups to the existing water system and to the new water system that would be Phase 1, that we've already set aside money for in this. And also to help us hook up to the new, to the Phase 2A and B, which I'm assuming would be the next system that we're gonna use the 5 million dollars towards in, in the order of what Public Works came up with. So, that being the case, I think we've got to set aside part of this money for that fund, or we're setting ourselves up to not make that system sustainable with the 8.5 million dollars that we're fixing to put in it. So, and that's not including the, the variable speed water pumps additions that we're, we've got to do one way or the other. So I guess those are the two things that I would add to Commissioner Pick, or Chairman Pickens's list would be the, the hookups and to find a way to try to fund something for a park that was given to us. And there's no really nice park in East Palaca. I still wanna try and go before the, which I don't think I can go before unless it's a meeting that's been advertised. I'd like to ask Parks and Rec to see if we can't get a FERDAP grant for the San Mateo Recreation Area. It's been there since I was a kid. They haven't even painted a damn fence out there. So it seems to me like they could try to get maybe a FERDAP grant, put a little, a little playground or maybe a pavilion in a little playground and make it, you know, just kinda nice. It doesn't have to be a triangle park, which is, or, or anything, but something that's nice. And, and I think that we should respect the people who donated the park to us in East Palaca, the community park, the new Beadon Ball Community Park. We should respect that gift enough to be able to, to try to take it to a little bit next level and try to put a pavilion in there or make it a usable park instead of just a open field, which is what it is right now. So those are, along with the, the additions to the other parks that we've been, that Commissioner Pickens came up with, that basically over, overspins. And that's not including things like we can't do out of ARPA money because we're not in the right census tract. But it's like putting a pickleball court over there in East, in San Mateo. That seems like the best thing going right now, that everybody seems to be playing pickleball. And to actually light the thing up, where they can go over there and just light up the court area and let them play pickleball in San Mateo too and give them an option out there. Instead of just Theobald Park is the only option in the, in the county. So that's, I agree, I agree is a complete conversation for another time because it's not a ARPA, it's not in the ARPA census tract. So that will have to go. But all those, all those together, using the 1.2 for the ambulances, the 3.3 for the response, 2.2 for the, the HVAC replacements of the old R22 units, the, the 460 for South Putnam recreational and upgrades, and the Theobald upgrades, Theobald Park upgrades, and the water system hookup. That already runs us over the 3.609 because we thought we had 3.718 when we started. But, so we're 109 short of that. So we're still a little under 200,000 is all we have left unless we decide to not fund something different in order to do, to leave more money in for the 500,000 dollar deal or whatever the case may be. So that's all I have at this time, Chairman Pickens.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, first, I really fought hard to get the nonprofits money. And then as the conversations were going, there's always unattended consequences and things that we don't know about. And then my concern was bringing nonprofits in at a federal requirement level. And, and also listening to the community who is adamantly against, a lot of them were against nonprofits getting money. So I've kinda changed my tune on that just a little bit. I would love to see that, but I, I don't think that's gonna fly. And I do appreciate one nonprofit saying that they're gonna continue their purpose no matter what goes on and hasn't even come back. So not saying that the other ones aren't worthy. It's just that possibly we can avoid any taxpayer increases by doing some of the things that we're gonna talk about today. I do agree with the four ambulances. I think that's a very needed thing, and yes, we were behind on them. And I do believe going into the future, we need to have a plan to replace those ambulances. Our citizens deserve that. I do agree with the quick response at 3:30. I do wanna say that the roof at the EOC and the access at the EOC is a concern of mine because we're gonna be trying to use that building. We use that building for hurricane and disasters and possibly maybe some employee healthcare going into the future. And the roof is leaking now, so I think we can...
Have a possible amount on the EOC.
I think that was 300,000 on the roof and the access was 30,000. I do support the HVAC at 220. I have heartburn. I'll tell you, it's hard, it's gonna be a hard sale when I've got constituents wanting Parks in West Putnam to be upgraded. And we have to say that they don't fit in the census tract. For the life of me, I don't get that. But Sam, you kinda made mention of something this morning. I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but there might be hope if there was an area of financial distress. Is, is that what I heard?
That is what you heard, sir.
Okay, so with that, I mean, there are a lot of people. I don't know if y'all fill up your cars anytime lately, but $20 bill don't go very far in the gas tank anymore. And trying to tell people that we're gonna put all this money in Theobald and come on down and have a good time, they can't get there. And I, I have a concern about that. We have parks, we have parks in West Putnam, we have parks in San Mateo, we have parks in East Palaca that need some, some fulfillment on it, some enjoyment. And South Putnam, so I, I think we should, I don't have a problem with a placeholder number, and I don't have a problem debating that as we go into the future. But I'm not sure I wanna spend all that money today. And we don't have to spend all that money today. We can actually say, you know, if we can whittle this money down a little bit, it doesn't have to be all spent today. I do support the water project, the 25% match. I think anytime, again, like I said yesterday in the meeting, that you can buy one, get one free at a store. That's a good deal. You can always tell when I go shopping and what I come home with, because it's buy one, get one free, you know? But if somebody is, if we can use that money to pay the 25% match, that reduces the burden on our taxpayer. And Chairman Pickens, I applaud you on the 500,000 total, 100,000 per district. I think that's a, it's a marvelous idea if we can find projects that can fit in that ARPA funding. Or, or maybe it's a, maybe it's a quick response unit for West Putnam. I, I don't know the answer there, but I like the idea of having a little bit of leeway. I haven't totaled my numbers up. I'm sure I'm probably over that, but I didn't add in a Parks number. But again, if, I think if we can agree on five out of six items today, we can always come back and deliberate the park, the park situation on a later date. So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey.
May I ask a question, or would you like me to wait?
Yeah, we'll wait till the end.
Specifically to him?
Okay, then ask the question.
So the, what you're proposing is the thing that you talked about and talking about Parks and Rec at a sep- as a separate deal. Is that what you just...
I, I think, yeah. I think we should, if we can today pick out the things that we know and then we have X amount of dollars left, whatever that number is, then let's have later on that. We can say we're gonna put that in Parks and we can have that discussion either today or another day. But then staff knows where we're going with it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing.
Okay, Commissioner Adams, act.
I fully support with the money left, putting it to not-for-profits. The full 3.609 million. However, I, I anticipated coming into this that that wasn't, we weren't gonna have the three votes to make that happen. So I went a different path than, than all of this. And at some point, we need to start looking at our people, not just equipment and things like that, because it's great to put new equipment in front of things. But when we have turnover, high turnover rates in personnel in the, the two areas, our Public Works and Fire EMS, where we have the highest level of turnover, we need to do something to try to retain those people. And part of ARPA does allow for retention bonuses as well as for one-time pay increases as a result of this. So I think we should try to focus, if we're not doing any not-for-profits, around 1.3 million. I haven't finalized my numbers, but it would be around 1.3 million over the next two years to do retention bonuses for those two sectors of our, of our group that are, we have the highest rate of turnover. It's 100, and we have currently, I think in Public Works, there's around 30-some employees. We have openings for 21, I believe. So we can't get people even to come in to there. So we need to make sure we retain those 30-some people that we do have. So we should be looking at retention bonuses for the people that are here that have stayed committed, even though the, the economy and other things haven't gone their way. I also believe for fire rescue, we need to look into that the same manner, where retention bonuses are, are done in order to keep the people that we have and potentially pay increases as well. So that'd be about 1.2 million. I, I do agree with the Parks thing, but I don't think we should use any of this money for Parks because I just think we should be doing that holistically as a county. If we were gonna go the QRV route, Station 20 absolutely needs another vehicle. So I would be willing to, to go that route in lieu of not-for-profits getting the money as long as Station 20 got one of those vehicles. Because right now, they're operating with some things that don't even look good, let alone operate properly all the time. Those really were the main things. I think we need to take care of our employees. And again, I, I would absolutely, even if we did those two things, which is around 1.4 million, I think, between the two that I'm suggesting, I would like to see the other 2-point-something go to not-for-profits. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Adams, act. Okay, we'll start with, with questions and deliberations and then see if we can move, maybe get a consensus and do some of these things forward. And I'll go ahead and say I have no problem with, with Parks and Recs if we are gonna look at that again and maybe see if there's some other parks that could be included. So, but anyway, we'll start with Commissioner Turner. He put his light on first.
Yeah, I was just thinking maybe we could go ahead and start getting the ones that we have a consensus on or majority consensus on. So I think if I'm hearing correctly, in mine, Commissioner Pickens's and, Chairman Pickens's and in Commissioner Harvey's, that the ambulances and the quick response squads were included in each of those proposals. So... And... Let's see, I didn't know until this morning that we actually needed EOC upgrades, but what is the epitome of using ARPA money if it's not for EOC upgrades? You wanna chime in, Mr. Young, or?
So one portion of that original list has been taken care of by a DEM grant, the access system. So that can be alleviated from the need. As far as the roof is concerned, I, I don't, I don't know that it's gonna be eligible, to be fair.
Okay, yes, Sam shaking his head no. So the EOC deal's probably out. So basically, at this point, I think that by consensus or by presentation of the ambulances and the quick response squads, could we go ahead, would you accept a motion from me, Commissioner Pickens, that those two items be added to the list of, of the allocations set aside? Would you be willing to take that motion at this time?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we, we need to start somewhere. And I think that was probably, probably the, the ones that were talked about the most.
I move that we set aside 1.2 million dollars for four ambulances and 330,000 dollars for two quick response squads.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Turner, and we got a second by Commissioner Harvey. So we'll start with questions and deliberations. So Commissioner Adams, act, you ring in first.
As I don't believe I can stop this train, I would like for one of the emergency, the quick response vehicles to be in Station 20, to be set aside for that station because they're, they're in need of that vehicle, in my opinion, in the opinion of the community out there. And it is a, it is an underserved station that is overlooked a lot. It was looking really good there for a little bit, and things have dropped off in the last few months. Been a few meetings out there, and the public out there is, is really pissed off. So, and then as is the case maybe other places.
We hear from the, we can't...
I was gonna, I was gonna call JR up and, and hear for JR. But I want everybody to understand, and I think everybody should understand that this dies, is we hired this young man standing in front of us.
Yeah, we can't micromanage.
Six, eight months ago, a year ago, whatever it was, time goes by so fast. And he's made staff changes, he's made a lot of changes, but we hired him to fix this problem. This problem didn't happen overnight. It's damn sure not gonna be fixed overnight. I think he's doing a tremendous job, and I appreciate your concern because definitely maintenance and equipment was one of the big issues from the committee, correct? So JR, I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you, you requested these, so I'm sure you have a place for them to go. And I'm sure you have a place for the ones that these will replace to go, whether it's out to pasture or to another facility that doesn't have as many calls. So if you, if you wanna feel comfortable addressing it, would you please?
Well, I can give you, I mean, I don't know exactly which house they'll put in, but I can tell you that two of them that are from the west end of the county have, you know, went completely out of service. One of them's got a major repair bill ahead of it that I don't think is worth putting the money in to replace it. And the other one got in a car crash. So both of those have, just need to be replaced because we haven't had a mechanism before to replace them. But as far as the, the comments, exactly where they're going, we're gonna evaluate our fleet inside of each one of those areas, and we're gonna put them in the best place and the best knowledge that we have of where they're gonna do the most impact to our communities. So good chances it may end up right out there, but I just have to look at, see what everybody else's situation is.
So the other, the second part of it is, I, I think, because I, I think it's a, it's a bad precedent to set to utilize one-time funds to buy equipment and not, it just, it seems like we're setting ourselves up for, we're not gonna have this one, COVID's not forever. Or I, I hope to God that COVID and the federal government sending us money, which someone out here the one day when we were deliberating, it was like, well, the Republicans were gonna say, it's not Republican, Democrat, but I wouldn't have voted if I was in Congress to do this funding whatsoever. So I don't think this funding should even exist. But we're gonna use it because it would be stupid of us not to use it as a commission because it's available to us.
I agree with you 100%.
It's a tough spot when we start funding needs that aren't one-time. This isn't a one-time need. Your ambulances and your QRVs are not one-time needs. They are perpetual. So as those things age out and those things fail, or there's accidents or other things, this is us taking an easy out and not really having a plan as a commission to make sure that you have what you need as the, in your position to, to, on the ongoing basis, have this equipment. So I think holistically, whether we pass this or not, we need to really get serious about figuring out how we're gonna continue to get ambulances, fire trucks, QRVs on a rotational basis and figure out a way to keep our employees funded properly so we don't have the turnover rates we have, especially in your situation. Because there's a lot of carnal knowledge as someone comes in and out of your service as far as where to drive and locations in the county, what roads are good, what roads are bad, how to avoid bad spots. I mean, you know all of this. We need to start looking at it from a people perspective, in my opinion. That's why I'd like to see, I'd rather see this money go towards retention bonuses and, and temporary pay increases to get us over this hump where we're shorthanded on people in two of our organizations and we're still experiencing high turnover. I understand there's things coming down the road, and this is why I think it's a short-term solution because, especially in your case, because we have the training center coming and other things coming that are possibly gonna get us some local kids that come through. And then them local kids are more likely to stay than someone that went through fire college and happens to live in St. John's, and they stop here and they take the job here, but they're trying to get back home. And that's what we want our kids to do. And our kids aren't necessarily gonna go off to fire college, but if they do it here, you know, that's, that's two to three... here, you know, that's that's two to three years off. We have the we have the opportunity, if we spend about 1.2 million dollars, to head that off and and try to keep some people here for that two years until that's up and running and we start getting these local kids that when they're 18, come out with their EMS certificate and then they can start getting their first certificate while they're in the job. I really think we need to consider that with this rather than equipment and figure out in our county budget how to fund equipment. I'm just adamant about that and I would put that over a quick response vehicle in Station 20 every day, all day. Because people are what matters. We can have all the equipment we want in public works, we can have all the ambulances we want, we can have all the fire trucks we want. If we don't have the people to operate them and we don't have the consistent people, it's irrelevant. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
Ditto to everything that Commissioner Adams just said. You know, I've been saying it since I got elected. We don't use strategic planning. We have a strategic plan, but we don't use it. We don't set aside funds to take care of issues that we can see that's that's coming on the horizon. We have other funding sources. These problems didn't start the day that JR got hired and they're not going to end the day that he quits. This is going to be a perpetual problem for the county until we do the right thing for the citizens and properly fund our departments. I'm looking at a at a spreadsheet that I got from HR that shows start dates and termination dates. It shows overtime of all of our employees. You had 113 people quit in a 12-month period of time. 113 people. How many people do we have in total B O C C right now? If you divide that, you're at 240, that's about 50% turnover from January of 2021 to January of 2022. That is a problem in itself. We don't have the means and we don't have the resources to be able to fix the problems that we have. We're continuously behind the eight ball. And the eight ball is is getting much, much, much smaller in the window and not bigger because we're not catching up to it. And now we've got this threat of this horrible economy that's going to eat our lunch. But I would encourage you guys to ask for the same thing that I got and spend a couple of hours really breaking down and researching it and take a look at our staffing. Take a look at what we pay. You'll see why we turn people over. We have a lot of people that are making $13 and less per hour right now. What was it somebody said today? You get a $19 an hour if you go to work for Chick-fil-A? We we don't, in my estimation, we're continuously putting out fires. We're not getting ahead, we're not doing, being proactive. You know, we we vote to reduce the 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 tax burden on the citizens, but we don't take care of our employees first. And they're they're what makes this county work. So I agree. This this train is on the tracks. There's no doubt this vote is going to go in a positive direction. I will vote begrudgingly to purchase the fire trucks and the EMS vehicles. I I think that this is a mistake in the way we're doing this because when the when we have the next accident, when we have the next truck that breaks down, how are we going to fix it then? Because we can't fix a truck in the west end that's broken down right now. We we don't have, well, one was wrecked, I understand that. But the 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 point is, is we're, this is not how I would run my business. And and I respectfully disagree with anybody that says that we should not be running the government like we would run our personal business. We should run this like it's our personal money. I don't think anybody that sits up here would run their business in that manner. So I'll vote in favor of this just to get along, but I I I still think we're doing a disservice to the community by not supporting the nonprofits that are doing the work that we can't do or refuse to do. It it just gripes me every time I think about the fact that when somebody's in crisis here because they're having a a a mental breakdown because they have a mental issue and they have to be taken out of county to be treated because we don't have a treatment facility here, or they have a substance abuse disorder and their family's trying to get them into rehab and we don't have that ability here. You know, that that's what we should be focusing on. COVID caused a lot of harm to our citizens. It didn't cause harms to our trucks. It didn't cause harms to our parks. It didn't cause harms to anything other than our citizens. It gave us a bad economy. It's going to continue to perpetuate. I made a comment when we first chose to go into the lockdown and stay locked down that this was going to make 2000 look like child's play. And if you think that it doesn't, you got another thing coming and it's coming really quickly at us. I think we do, we owe it to our employees to do exactly what I just said and start supporting them and start taking a look at what we're really paying. Look at at the compression of the pay scale. We have employees here that have been here for 20 and 30 years that are making less than people that have been here for two or three years. And I think that's going to be problematic for us, but I would encourage you to look at that. I'll be voting for this just because I I don't want anybody to think that I don't support the fire service because of one commission that sits on this board that supports the most is me. But I think this is the wrong way to budget and to fund our fire service. Thank you.
Commissioner Turner?
Okay, I I'm going to try not to turn this meeting into a campaign stop. And just because we're saying that we don't have a strategic plan
This isn't the time for ad hominem.
Doesn't make that accurate. We do have a strategic plan and it's being followed as far as I that I think. So anyhow, using any of this money for salary increases would be a mistake because you can't take one-time money and use it for a recurring expense because then how are you going to fund it next year? So you just can't do that. If we're going to do that, we need to figure out a way to do it that that we can cover the recurring expense. Trucks are not a recurring expense. They have to be bought. But that truck works until it needs to be replaced or it's wrecked and unusable or whatever. It does not make it a recurring expense. It's a non-recurring expense. And so until it has to be replaced. But it's not like every year, like salaries, they're recurring expenses. Once you give it a raise, if you don't have the money, you can't take the raise away next year. You just can't do that. And so if we could get back to the motion at hand, that we'll go back to our campaigning and grandstanding after
Terry, that we don't, we don't need those comments.
Okay, my apologies, Mr. Chairman. If we could call, if I could call for the question to vote on the two issues, we actually have the motion on the floor on.
Okay, we're going to finish up, comment Larry, Commissioner Harvey, then Adams, Zach, then Rawls, and then we'll, I'll call the question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do support the ambulances and the quick response. I do have a question for JR. Do you mind if I ask him to come back up? And I can go ahead and ask it while you're walking this way. The the concern of the West Putnam area, I mean, we are trying to address that one day with a fire department out there in a strategic location. We are trying to address some water shortages out there that we talked about the other day too for strategic locations. We we know that some fire stations out there don't have the ability and the manpower anymore to run responses and we we know that. I I have full confidence in you that if you know there's a need, you'll try to find, you'll try to replace that need. So my question, you're probably wondering, is there a question involved here, Mr. Hart? There is one. If if we decided, let's say that we we're going to pass this and you're going to get two quick response vehicles, which, but there might be one somewhere in another station not being used, we could move that to another high-volume call or not if they're not responding to those. Or can I ask this question? Could a commissioner out of the, if the 100,000 per district, could we say, we want that to go to a quick response?
Sure. I mean, if you want to give me another $100,000, put one in your district, then I mean, absolutely.
Well, I I'm just saying, it it could be an option. And if you go, if you start looking at it and go, you know what, this station, and I'm not going to start naming them because that would that would be inappropriate, you know, you know, the call volumes better than I do. You might say, you know, guys, there there's one over here that really could use something over there. It wouldn't hurt one of us commissioners if we pass that 500,000 total, 100,000 per district to do that with that money, correct?
Let's see where there's an issue with that.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Adams?
So equipment is a recurring expense. I mean, that's that's why we lease some equipment and we know that they're going to expire in a certain, I mean, it's part of what he's presented to us, that in so many years he replaces fire trucks, he has a plan. So it has been presented to us as a recurring expense and and I agree that it is. I think he needs to replace trucks as they age out. There is data out there that says when a piece of equipment is going to last too. So they are recurring expenses that we need to plan for. What I'm talking about is a retention bonus, which would be a one-time occurrence for those people that are most likely to be to leave. And we know that because there's two organizations which we have the highest rate of turnover, which is, so we know that. So that's a retention bonus is not recurring. That's a one-time thing, hopefully to keep people for a couple of years. There are ways to tie that to them staying for a couple of years. Part of that is to bridge until we get our training center up up and running. And the only reason why I bring it up in conversation about this is because I'd like to see us consider doing something that in lieu of the equipment. So that's why I brought up in this discussion, even though it seems like it may not be relevant to equipment, it's because I'd like to see the alternate use of the money. That's all I have to say about it. And I will be voting no because I support our fire EMS people and I think that they need to be retained and we need to to help them along the way to get there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Adams. Commissioner Rawls, I think we'll call for the question.
I just want to go on the record saying that at no time was anything that I saying, trying to infer that we that we would be using this for salaries or any anything like paying for services through for fire EMS or any of the other employees. I understand that this is non-recurring revenue. I understand that salaries are paid out of out of recurrent revenue. I also understand that we have revenue. We just need to realign it and spend it differently. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor to, from what I understand, to fund the two quick response vehicles and four ambulances. 1,530, is that the amount? 1,530,000, okay. All in favor and okay, but saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, passes four to one. Our commissioners, we have had a a lot of other suggestions come forward. So we've reduced this 300, 3,618,000 down to 1,500,000. So whatever that number is, that's what we have.
2,79830.
How much is it?
2,79830 is what we have left.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is we can just start and just have a conversation if we're if we're okay here with this meeting that we've moved this forward? Do we want to have another meeting to discuss, you know, other options and and also some parks and wrecks to other other suggestions? And then if the 500,000 would fit into this after we have reduced it to this amount? So Commissioner Turner, I'll start with, I'll start with you.
I think that, of course, I think that that we have to set aside another amount of money to help hook up people to our water system or we're not doing the things necessary to make those systems sustainable, which is because we got the sewer grant, we got, we set aside the water money for it. We got the new water grant to help make it sustainable. But the one portion of this that is absolute imperative to make this a successful venture is to be able to hook people up to the existing system and to the new systems when they're put in. And we don't have money set aside to do that yet. Now, I've been told by Sam, Mr. Sullivan, that he's pretty confident at this point that that the ARPA funds will cover both those situations, hooking up two existing system and the other. So would it be a possibility at this point to take a like $300,000 and set it aside for hookups to the existing system to help customers get hooked up and and to use it towards the new system? And then if we had to at a later date come up with more money, we may have to consider that later, but at least take that portion of it and and help all the citizens that that can hook up along the water line. So I would like to make a motion at this time, if you'll accept it, that we set aside another 300,000 of the money to use towards hookups to the water system.
Okay, we've got a a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a second and discussion. Commissioner Harvey is first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, I have my number. Well, I go ahead and call him.
Okay. I had the number right, but anyway, Commissioner Rawls?
Any idea what it costs to hook a house up?
Any idea of what?
Between permitting and connection, what the cost would be per house?
No, I don't. That's why I said that if we set aside 300, now I know that it'll, we'll burn that up and probably more than that later if it's, so it'll run out. I bet this won't last a year. I bet it won't last, once we get the new system hooked up, we're going to have, I think it was 600 hookups there that that not, that so if we have 600 hookups, that's not, it's going to be more than $500 a hookup. And that's not including hooking people up to the existing system, which I believe that we need to have around of the existing hookups to be able to, before we mandate that everybody have to hook up from there forward if their well goes out. We need to give them a an opportunity to hook up on our dime. And then if they don't take it and their well goes out, they had that opportunity. I think that's fair. And so that's where I came up with the 300 was I figure it just half of what we'll need for first go-round.
But I, you know, I'm I'm not in favor of spending ARPA money for the water system to begin with, but connecting them is, I I think we're just really misuse the money, but you're you're not going to hit the bullseye. The cost of pipe right now is extravagant. You you pay top dollar for plumbers. You're you're not going to get this done. I I wouldn't imagine for less than $800 per house, but we're going to miss the bullseye or we're going to have to come up with more money to do this. And we're, again, we're we're just throwing money at, we're not having a, you know, a conversation about a a complete project and bringing all the numbers for it. We're just going to throw money out there and say, let's try this and get it started and then come back and spend more. So I I'm I'm opposed to spending this extra money right now. We just put 3.5 million into it. We don't even know what that's going to cost yet. But I'm 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 opposed to this.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason I seconded is because I wanted to have a discussion. And I do think that, you know, seeing our water system and the drain on our taxpayers that it is, we've got to get it, we've got to get it propped up and and reduce the burden on everybody else in the county who's helped subsidizing that because they are. But I'm not in favor of 100% us paying everybody's hookup either. So the reason I I second it is because I don't mind it being a placeholder number and then coming up with a plan later on down the road where maybe we cost share with the person to do that. I always think a carrot is better than a stick. And I think in that case, I I I'm in favor of a placeholder number of 300,000 and then let this board decide what's going to be the carrot. How how are we going to implement a program based on that? And and look, all of these things that we're doing today, we're going to have to come back and revisit these. There's no doubt about that. The the communication towers might be more or less, the water system might be more. We we don't know. We're just putting numbers out there right now to direct staff. And I believe, Commissioner Turner, if you don't mind, maybe at a later date, we can come back and revisit this and have that discussion on what does that 300,000 mean? Does it mean we're going, hey, we'll split the cost, whether you kind of like water management does with us or, you know, for the first 500 people that sign up, we'll we'll pay 100%? I don't know that answer, but I think it's important for us to have a place.
Me, I have no problem with that. In fact, I think this whole thing's got to be addressed sometime in the not-too-distant future as far as we'll do it or we'll help or whatever the board comes up with. But then at that point, the, you know, I think we've got to hook up the ones to the new system. But as far as the existing system, if we can't fund that, maybe we could do a cost share of some kind. I don't know. And at some point, the the system is going to start making enough money to where it can help fund some of these too. It's just not quite there yet, but it's going to start getting to that point in the not-too-distant future. And so it may be that we don't need more than the 300 to get this program going, but you're absolutely right. We've got to have a conversation and I believe And I believe it was, again, I believe it was Commissioner Rawls that brought this thing up. We've got to make some tweaks in this. We've got to make it to where at some point that if you're building a new house in the area where we have a water system and a sewer system, you've got to hook them to it. There's not, not an option, you know? So I don't know that we even have that right now. So, you know, there's a lot of little tweaks that have to be done to make, as part of this sustainability issue and also the, for what we have the system there for in the first place.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner.
I'd be good with that.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield.
Commissioner Adams, Zach?
This is Putnam County, Florida. This is not the county of East Placa. We've already set aside three point five million for East Placa Water System. We've already, we have another five million coming from another source. We've put over one point something million a year every year of its existence and it's losing money. The drain is literally the drain. It's the sewage side of it. The water is the path out to make it feasible. So the drain on it is the fact that the sewer costs too much. The water is the way that we get it solvent. I agree with that. The water is the way we get it solvent. I do not agree with putting another penny of ARPA money into a water system. We've, in the last several, last two months, we've dedicated almost nine million dollars to, for, to service basically around three thousand citizens in the end game of it out of seventy-five thousand. And if you take all of East Placa and you start taking the other things like the drainage and all the other stuff that we're doing in East Placa, basically mostly in East Placa, leaving out whole other areas of our community that have plenty of water sitting there as well, you're talking probably in the fifteen to twenty million dollar range. And none of that is happening anywhere else. Now, am I all for getting infrastructure where it is? Yeah. And that's why I suggested, and I'm for using some ARPA money for water, just not all dedicated to one area. That's why I'd like to see us talk to the other communities, which is what I've discussed in the past, and see if there's a way that we can partner with them where they share some of the revenue if we expand in our most populated areas. Part A of the plan for, that was presented by Mr. Troxel, for that plan makes sense. Part B makes sense. The rest of it does not make sense from a population standpoint and the amount of return we would get as far as connections and water usage. Then we start going the other way where it's costing us more to hook people up than possibly what we see as an investment. It's counterintuitive. When we have areas outside of the city of Placa, outside of Crescent City, outside of places where we already have water systems, where if we partnered with those communities interlocking as well and potentially got some revenue back, where our one-time investment may get us a percentage of revenue back for perpetuity based on those residents live in the county. We need to have that conversation, I think, before we put another dime into water in one location that services only a small minority of our population. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Adams, Zach. Okay. Any other discussion?
Oh, for questions.
Okay. We got a proper motion on the floor, a proper second. All in favor and I can say aye? Aye. Pose, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes three to two.
All right. Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
On the, we had a conversation on the twenty-five percent match. And in my figure, if I'm correct right now, we're at one point seven, seven, six million. What would that, I never got the cost of what that twenty-five percent match would look like.
One million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
It's a five million dollar grant and it's twenty-five percent match. The problem I'm having with it, Commissioner, if I may, Mr. Chairman, or if he doesn't mind.
And this is on the?
This is on the five million dollar?
This is the one point two.
Army Corps that we just got on, everybody understands, okay?
Related to what he just said.
Right.
I was told that we're, that it's absolutely not clear yet if we can use ARPA money for that and that it'll have to go all the way back to Treasury. So as a backup plan and the, we had a million dollars in better place plan budgeted to go towards that communication system.
Right.
We set aside the money for the communication system and in barring it going over a million or something that we'd have to use that money to get us there, barring that happening, we could take that million dollars and use it later towards the one point two-five million dollar match for that grant. And so that's why I think that we have that option later on. And so, you know, I don't know, I don't know. I think we're, what, a million? Where are we at right now?
Million seven. But I guess my point is, we, again, I said this earlier today, we don't need to spend every penny today. We could say, you know what, we're going to check, take a look at the twenty-five percent match. We're going to take a look at parks and rec because we're slowly getting down to where that parks and rec number, Mr. Chairman, that you brought out is getting close to now at this point, less any district-specific projects. So, but again, I think we've, again, we've given staff enough direction so far. I wouldn't have a problem going, okay, let's kind of put the skids on for a minute and let's look at, the rest of this might go to the match, parks and rec, or any other thing that might come up. But that's how I feel today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Turner?
I agree. I think that we've made some good progress today and we still got one million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. We're getting there. And I really like the idea that I heard today about you giving each commissioner a hundred thousand dollars for a project, an ARPA project in each commissioner's district. It wouldn't even break my heart if we did two hundred thousand dollars a commissioner even, you know, and used another million. But, you know, maybe for instance, that, who is the commissioner for Triangle Park? Who is the actual commissioner? Is that you, Jeff?
I would think it'd be Jeff.
Well, let's say for.
That's a, that's a port authority conversation.
Well, I understand. But, I mean, let's say for instance, you wanted to take your two hundred thousand dollars and use it for the lighting upgrade at that park. And then maybe I thought that was a really good idea and so I could actually take my two hundred thousand dollars and put with it. I mean, there's nothing, no rule that we couldn't make that rule.
I would say take the million left over for the communication and BPP and put it towards parks and that.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah. I, that's a, that's a conversation for later date.
Yeah.
I would support giving two hundred thousand each district if that's, if that's, if that's a motion I would second that.
No, I'm not. And I don't really want to do it yet. I think, I think Commissioner, well, I would, I would do that. No, I would do that.
I think we probably need to let it dust settle and just have another meeting to discuss that because there's a possibility that the commissioner may want to give nonprofits out of that money too. That's not out of the, that's not out of the realm of that either.
Right. So I'm good with that.
We still haven't had a meeting with the city yet and they've offered to partner with us and share with, put together some of the ARPA money as well, so.
We're trying to set that up. Hopefully they will. Did you send those dates, Sarah? Okay. Okay. All right. Commissioner Adams, Zach?
Yeah. The one point seven, seven, nine million dollars in the grand scheme of things is, you know, with a two hundred, eight million dollar budget this year, or plus two oh eight at the end of it, is minimal with what we've been given between cares and this, again, is about five percent of it is what we have left. I think we should just split it between the five commissioners at this point and go forward with making sure it meets ARPA standards with Sam and make sure we're taking some, care some initiatives in our areas because I honestly, at this point, feel it's the only way that areas that aren't in a certain district are going to get anything of benefit. So that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey?
Can I ask a quick question of what he just said?
Okay.
So your proposal is to take the money left and split it five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harvey?
You know, I think we need to be very careful going forward. And again, it's kind of like when your grandmother sends you a check in the mail, you pretty much know you can cash that and there ain't a whole lot of strings left on it but to go by and maybe visit with her a couple of times a year, whatever the case may be. Federal government's not our grandmother and there's a lot of strings to that. And there could be clawbacks. And just because the commissioner wants to spend two hundred thousand in his district and one commissioner might think that's a great idea, we're the Board of County Commissioners and we have to vote on that. And I don't mean that ugly because I want that to be vetted, even my project to be vetted, because I don't want the federal government to come back and go, yeah, that guy in District Four, he spent that money irrationally and we're going to take that money back because this commissioner doesn't write the check for two hundred thousand or a hundred thousand. The Board of County Commissioners are going to write that check. And that's going to be a very big check to write. So as we go, I support, I support that. Don't get me wrong. But I'm trying to look at the projects that, that aren't going to put our nonprofits in trouble, not going to put our county in trouble. And at least, who's going to say to us, who's the federal government going to say, you spent money on ambulance? What were y'all thinking? Yeah, we're thinking about taking care of our public safety and our citizens of Putnam County. So that, that's what we're thinking. And I just caution us to be very careful. That's why I'm almost ready to say, let's end the meeting. We're at one point seven and we'll come back. I'm sure we're going to debate every product that we brought. I'm sure we have money sitting there. And one last thing, you know, we haven't even landed the animal shelter yet. We got money sitting there since the day I was here almost. And, and we don't know if that's going to be an overrun. So before we start spending all that BPP money that we got placeholder money, let's just slow down a little bit and have this conversation as we go forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Before I go to Commissioner Adams, I should have said that if we were to agree on an amount and distribute it to a district, that the commissioner definitely would have to get with staff to follow the guidelines to make sure, and especially with the nonprofits because I think it's a little harder to track that than if it was for a one-time upgrade or purchase for a park or a fire station or something like that.
Also make it part of the deal that had to be approved by the commission once you came up with it.
Right. I would agree to that too. Commissioner Adams, Zach?
So that's exactly my point. I did say verified with Sam, who is the person who we've put in charge of telling us what is viable and what is not when we asked the question. So I said that. So I just want to be clear that everyone understands that that is what I said when I talked about what my idea was. So thank you.
Okay. I feel that if we could just, we'll have closing comments and then try to set another date, I think maybe at our next Board of County Commission meeting, if that's okay, in closing comments, we can set another date for the final, or for another ARPA meeting. Is that okay with the commissioner?
Yes, very nice.
Okay.
You say you're just going to try to do it during one of our regular?
No, no, no. I think we would have another meeting unless, unless we decide that we just want to take it to a workshop. But we can discuss that at our next, the end of our next county commission meeting in two weeks. Okay? Is that agreeable with everybody?
Just during a regular workshop?
No.
Or a regular meeting?
No, we'll discuss it and come up with a date.
Come up with another date.
If we're going to have a special meeting or have it, add it to a workshop.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Any commissioner comments? We'll start with Commissioner Adams, Zach?
I'm going to withhold my comments.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
The only thing that I was hoping that we could do today, if possible, and that we didn't get accomplished, was that we could at least pull out part of the, part of the stuff for Theobald Park, even if we didn't want to fund the whole thing and maybe let them get started on some of these upgrades. You know, I don't know whether it'd be the lighting or I don't know what, what would be their most reasonable or most needed step for that park. What'd you say?
Port Authority.
Yeah, but we could still spend money out of our recreation budget to be able to upgrade the lights at Triangle Park. There's nothing wrong with that. So I understand it's owned by the port and we're going to have a discussion that it may not be in the future. So I understand all that, but the, I'm pretty sure we could. So other than that, I do think we made very good progress today and I think that we've got to try to do as, spend this money to help as many people as we possibly can with it. I believe that at some point, the, some of these upgrades at the park have to be made and it would keep us from having to pay for it, which would reduce taxes in the future. Plus, there's a lot of people that use Theobald Park, a lot of people in this county. So it's probably the most used park in all of Putnam County times two. So will that be? What'd you say?
Francis gets a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, it's mostly Babe Ruth baseball stuff in Francis though, where this is everybody that thing more so. So anyhow, I, I look forward to that conversation in the future, Mr. Chairman, but I was hoping that we could at least get them started on some upgrades today. But I understand we didn't, so I look forward to that conversation in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
I just wanted to reiterate, you know, what I was stating before is, I'll put it in the form of a request that we put on a workshop to discuss staffing, salaries going forward, start getting a plan to take on the increase in the minimum wage and also start having a conversation about our working poor or, you know, people that would be classified in Putnam County under Alice and start strategically looking at what we can do to help everybody in the county with regards to this economy that's coming up. I think there's some things that we can do strategically and I think we should set a time to have that conversation.
I just have a question for Commissioner Rawls or for staff, I guess. Is there a way that we could all get forwarded whatever information he requested just so that we're all working off the same page? Because I don't have any information with overtime and that kind of stuff, so I'd like to see that as well. And I assume the rest of the commission would as well.
What we'll do, absolutely. And quite frankly and honestly, what we'll do is when information has anything to do with something of this nature's payroll and salaries and things like that, I think it would be a remiss if we didn't send a dollar five. Regardless of who's making the request, it's going to come up in the discussion. I think everybody should have it so we can do that. It's by the record.
Just so you'll know, this is, every year since I've been elected, I've made a request of HR to send me a list of payroll and typically it was in rank order. And I would just go through and what, the first time I requested it, what jumped off the page was looking at starting dates and then looking at salaries and questioning, why is it this person that's been here for 20 years is making forty thousand dollars a year and this person's been here for six months is making sixty-four thousand dollars? And that, that's a real scenario. This year when I requested, I got it, but then I said, you know what? Can you give it to me by department? And I would like to see start dates and end dates. And I had no idea that what I was going to be looking at was going to show almost a fifty percent turnover in a 12-month period. And I asked for it January to January. Each year is just January to January. So you want me to forward it to you? Then you forward it on or how do you want to do it?
That'd be fine, Commissioner. If you want to do that, it'd be easier. That way I make sure we're.
First, you allow the forwarders to us? I mean, I don't know how that works.
Yes, I can. Send it out.
I'd get them to forward it.
Okay.
Get HR to send it out.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this was a great meeting. Again, I'm going to reiterate that last year with the cares money or two years ago, you know, we, we told everybody then, it's hard to spend that kind of money and not be almost scared to do it because of clawback provisions and situations. We put a lot of money in the community and if you haven't looked at that final report, we really, really did put a lot of money out there. And we're going to put a lot of money in our community with what we're doing now. So, Mr. Chairman, I really congratulate you and the board. I know these are hard decisions to make and I know they're, they're gut-wrenching and personal. Not all of us are gonna walk away getting what we want, but we're gonna move Putnam County forward, and we're gonna promote Putnam County in a positive manner that, you know, maybe the drain on some citizens will go away or be reduced, and other citizens can enjoy. And then everybody wins when the, when the rising water comes and it lifts all ships. So I'm just saying, I think it's a great discussion we're having. We are putting numbers in placeholder areas, and I'm sure we're gonna be coming back to revisit that. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
Okay, Commissioner Adams, Zach, you have another comment?
Oh, no.
Okay, all right, and, yeah, I think so. I think we, you know, we made some decisions here. I'm gonna make everybody happy, but I think we, we did the best that we could for the majority of the citizens. I'll move down to closing comments from Honorable Matt Reynolds. Matt, do you have anything to add?
I do not, sir.
Okay, Administrator Suggs?
No, sir, staff is good, thank you.
Okay, Sam, you're sitting in for the county attorney. You have any thing you want to say? All right, there's no further business. We stand adjourned.